Okay, a call the meeting to order roll call please.
Okay, it is five thirty six on January eleventh. Craig Borba.
Here.
Anita Garner.
Here.
Al Jones.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Present.
David Norgard.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Okay, Roman numeral two acceptance of the agenda. Any concerns if not roll call please.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Anita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes, I'm so moved.
Good, good point, thank you. David, all right, public comments, do we have anybody there?
We have one visitor, but he usually does not speak. If you want to give public comment, please raise your hand. And no one's reached out to me. Otherwise. Do we have a second on the acceptance of the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Just to keep.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, Roman numeral four consent agenda, can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Anita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
All approved. I would just like to highlight on the donation report that we did receive. A fifty dollar donation from. Delores Bitterman. Okay, thank them very much.
All right, Roman numeral five administrative reports friends of the library Nancy, are you available?
Nancy's not on here, I will get, I'll give a little report for the friends.
Great.
Like, um, the friends are preparing for modernism week in February and they have. Two events at the library. They are photography exhibits, so we, I mean, we have a photography exhibit that will be at the library during modernism week. It looked like there are, there's actually a like a lecture that goes with it's free, but those are sold out. Uh, the one item that is still available is a house tour in Indian Wells. It's the historic Kavanaugh Adobe House Tour. And tickets are sixty dollars. And they are available on the modernism week websites and there are eight different times. It's a thirty minute tour. And it's a great fundraiser for the friends, so the tickets are still available for that one. And um, I'll give the rest of the report in my reports.
Uh, Ginny, they have a book sale coming up, correct?
Thank you, sorry, yes. Yep, this, uh, the twenty first of January, they are doing a bag sale at the Frye Building. I have the card.
No, no.
It's a bag for three dollars or a box for five dollars. Thank you, Lisa. And then it, uh, flip that card over, what's on the other, what's the other event? You got that one?
I'm just looking at their website.
Okay, there's another book sale, but I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the date. Terrible. Yeah. It's not in January or February, I don't think. We'll let you know if there's, if there is, if we know the actual date for that one.
Okay, thank you, Ginny.
Um, Palm Springs Foundation, David?
Sure, just quick, um, some stuff unrelated to the MOU. Um, our year end giving letter. Went out and we grossed. Fourteen thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars on that. Um, we have the final numbers in from Pride on the page and we made a little money on that. We are currently interviewing six new board members and they should be approved to join the board tomorrow at our meeting. And we're working on a new fundraiser. Um. That is tentatively called brunch on the page to kind of go along with Pride on the page. And that will be April first at a private home. We have a sponsor for just about everything and more details to come with. Two celebrity authors that will be at that brunch too, so we're very excited about that.
Great. So it's already funded, correct?
Yep, yep, we won't need any money for anything for that.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions for David from trustees? Okay, thank you, David.
Yeah, one question, Craig.
Yes, David.
David, how does the year end appeal receipt compared to previous years?
It's better, we got more. I don't have the previous years, but I remember, I don't think we broke ten thousand, so we're going pretty well. You know what else? I forgot one thing too, Ginny, you, you said that we were going to receive a grant from the city. We have not received that yet.
Um, I'm, I'll look into that because I'm not sure exactly what needs to happen.
Okay.
Get that, but yeah, uh, they will.
I mean to bring that up, but it was part of the report and then I forgot about it because we didn't get it.
And David, what was a dollar amount on that?
I think it was five thousand dollars.
Okay, good.
I want to say ten.
Oh.
Oh, I like you better, Ginny.
I think it was ten.
Don't ask me. It was ten, it says it's ten. I thought it was five, okay.
We'll take ten.
I'll make a note to check on it.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, Ginny, library staff report?
Thank you, okay, so um, I, I've got my bookmark. For the friends, uh, they are having the bag sale on the twenty first and on. March, the weekend of March twenty fourth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth, they are having their annual book sale. At the JC Frye Building Book and Media, all the things Friday. Uh, the twenty fourth, nine to one is members only and you can purchase memberships at the door. Saturday, nine to one, open to the public and then Sunday, nine to one, uh, bag sale, three and five dollars again on that one. Great for them, um. Mon- Monday, um, Monday, January sixteen, the library will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, the main library will be closed, Wellwood Murray Memorial Library will be open. Um. Now, uh, new year, new you, new organization and new decluttering. We are having a virtual author talk on Tuesday, January seventeenth. At eleven AM, it is author Dana K. White. I don't know if anybody is familiar with her. She's really big on social media. Um, I read several of her books, um, the book or what she's talking about this. Time is decluttering the start of your new year. Yeah, oh, I think it's declaring to start your new year typo on my part, but um, she's wonderful. I love to watch her videos. And I highly recommend her. These are all recorded videos too, so you can attend the live event, but then you can go back and watch the virtual events. Register on our website, palm springslibrary.org and find the event and then click the link to register.
Who's, so I'm sorry, who's this?
Her name is Dana K. White. Um, I forgot where she goes, but she goes by like Noni or something online. I don't know, I just love her, she's, she's funny. Yeah. And on January twenty fifth at six PM, we will have another one of our introductions to mahjong class. So our mahjong classes have been very popular. Uh, we've got people calling and asking for uh, play dates. So now that they've learned to outplay, they want to come and and have play dates. So we are going to start twenty fifth, right? Uh, we're going to start open play, I think.
Yes, the twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth, we're going to start on Wednesdays. From two to four to set up open play. Uh, we've got, we only have like one conflict at the end of March, but we'll, we'll figure that out, but um. If you've ever wanted to learn how to play Chinese mahjong, it's, it's a simpler version. There's an American mahjong, there's Chinese mahjong and there are different varieties and. Different ways to play, but this one's pretty, um, pretty simple. And a lot of fun and we bring in a teacher, she's great, her name is Lee Spod. And um, she does uh, private teaching and has mahjong maniac events and. Um, a growing popularity of this game right now in Palm Springs, so. A lot of fun, something uh, great to do. And we have the sets here, actually, you don't even have to have a set, you can just come and. And play on our set, so. Wednesdays from two to four, we're going to start that on the twenty fifth and then that, that night on the twenty fifth. If you've never played before and you'd like to learn, you can, is that class full? It might be full. We're getting close to full, though. It's required for that. And then the last thing I have to say is Palm Springs Speaks is coming back. And I'm not going to tell you who is coming. Because we're not ready to make an announcement, but we have someone booked, so I want to tell you to save the date for Friday, March thirty first. Six o'clock for VIP, seven o'clock, I believe, for regular, just like usual. It'll be at the Richard Center for the Arts and um, I'm very, very excited. And uh, we will be making a big announcement soon and the city did sponsor uh, twenty thousand for Palm Springs Speaks. So thank you to the city for that and the Friends of the Library are the um, the hosts and fundraiser, um, sponsor. Benefactor of this program. We used to partner with the Palm Springs Cultural Center and um, they were a great partner. And we had a good relationship with them and it just uh, was just. Too much on their plate and so we are taking it over just as the Friends of the Library, so. Um, still same Palm Springs Speaks, still same organizers. Players doing it mostly and. Uh, I'm very excited. I was like, I, I want to tell you, but I'm not going to. But I hope you like who it is and it will be, it will be a fun event and um. I think you will have, have a good time. We encourage you to start thinking of. Mark your calendar so that you can buy the tickets and come. I think that's it for my report unless you have a question for me.
Any questions for Ginny?
Ginny, could you repeat the date for that?
Friday, March thirty first.
Thanks.
And it'll be at the Palm Springs High School Auditorium, Richard Center for the Arts.
Great.
Thank you.
So how long are we going to wait till you make your announcement, Ginny?
Um, soon.
Okay, thanks for the.
We want to start selling tickets, but we've got to get it all set up. We've got to get the, the ticket platform set up and we've got to get it all ready to roll.
Ginny, is this, is this going to happen in the evening? Is it going to be available or, I mean, it's not going to be like in the middle of the day, right?
No, um, the VIP event will start at six o'clock and then the actual event, uh, the regular event will be at seven PM.
Thank you.
Yeah. And there will be book signing afterwards, uh, there will be book sales available. We will not be doing the, the method that we used to do where we gave away books. It's. Actually, it was very expensive for us, so um, we're just going to offer books for sale, a variety of books. So that tells you this person has written books.
Uh, tickets cost?
We will have tickets starting as low as thirty dollars and probably going up to one seventy-five, I think, for VIP. So a little bit in between sixty, but we haven't said that either, but.
Okay.
Our historical platform was thirty, sixty, ninety-five and. VIP. So.
All right, thank you, Ginny. Any other questions for Ginny? Right, thank you. Uh, Roman numeral six treasures report. Al.
Uh, yeah, you're on mute and can I, Al, can I mention a correction?
Thank you, yes.
Coming correction that's going to happen?
Yes.
So um, on the. Your, your financials, there's a um, a positive totaling three hundred dollars.
Correct.
It's a mistake.
Oh.
It should, it's fifty dollars and then a two hundred and fifty dollars. The two hundred and fifty dollars is actually a donation for James O. Jesse. Desert Highland Unity Center and it went into the wrong account, so it will be coming out.
But the total is the three hundred dollars still?
No, it's, it'll be fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah.
I thought you said fifty plus two fifty, I, I didn't hear correctly.
Yeah, the two fifty is a mistake, so in your next monthly.
Gotcha.
You'll see reversal.
All right, well, it doesn't really change the report that significantly because the only change, the variant was three hundred dollars, which is now is fifty. Uh, if you look at the um, total liabilities and fund balance of one point seven seven eight. On November thirtieth, we were at one point seven eight one, the difference being the three hundred dollars, which now has been changed to fifty, so. There's been nothing remarkable about the um, budget for the library unless I've missed something, Ginny, but I don't think I have.
No, they did do that, that um, withdrawal of the.
Right.
Costs.
Right, with the exception of that correction that Ginny just made.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I motion to, I make a motion to approve.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anita. Um, any further discussion? Or questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call please.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Anita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride. You're on mute.
And.
Yes.
Okay, David Norgard.
Yes.
All approved, thank you.
Okay, Roman numeral number seven is the discussion of the memorandum of understanding between the trustees and the foundation. Uh, David, uh, I'm assuming you can hear me. Was the, did you have enough time for the foundation to review this MOU?
We did. We did. And yes, I obviously can hear you. And, and what we thought we would do tonight is just kind of go through it with. With our questions, uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't. We don't have it in writing. We thought we could just discuss it, but whatever works for you.
Uh, that's fine, no, any of the trustees have an issue with that?
No.
Good.
No problem.
Good to go? Okay.
Okay, and, and um, Bill is going to kind of take the ball. And run with it.
And this is page seventeen of your packet.
So um, thanks, David, and uh, thanks uh, to you trustees and Ginny. Um, this was, this is a great um, document to be putting in place, uh, timing is great. Uh, because of the uh, progress on the, on the project and um. You could see the traction that we're getting with recruitment and, and uh, incorporating folks onto our board. Um, so we're going to come out of this with an understanding of. The relationship between the foundation and the city. Uh, and especially with regards to the naming rights, uh, and also. We have a rules of the road to propose to you, um, should there be. Some things we want to, we might want to do together and ask you for a grant, uh, so uh, we like, we like that sort of that duality of the, of the document. And as David said, we, we, uh, we did meet on the executive team. Uh, and went over this, um. And we had a couple of meetings on that and then David and I have talked uh, further about it. And so we're trying to distill. Um, our comments down to the essentials. And I must say that's really more of a question of clarification on some things as opposed to. Um, you know, obviously deal breakers, we, nobody wants to, everybody wants to uh. Come to yes on, on this. Um, and so I'm gonna, as David said, I'm gonna try to lead us through and then David's gonna uh, jump in where it's appropriate to do so and you. Folks can do that too. Um, I did have one question though, um, because we're going over uh, certain language and. Hopefully we'll come to some nodding of the heads uh, about. How to deal with clarifications and the things we're going to bring up. How do we do that then? Do we? Do we then have a subsequent meeting with the city attorney? Uh, who generated this draft or? Um. Well, and we can answer that question after we get through the, the issues, but just from a practical standpoint.
Yeah, I'm thinking we're going to need to bring it back, um, because they did put this together with our input. And uh, they also want to be able to protect the city, so.
Of course, of course, and then, you know, I think on our end, uh, we, one of the conditions here is that we're vouching that we. Consulted with legal and that we're signing off that. Uh, everything is appropriate, so we would like to take. A version to an attorney. Um, once we get the language cleared up and then I think we're, we're, we're good to go. Um, I don't, I'm hoping we don't have to go back and forth on this through several of your meetings. Um, so with that in mind. Um, we have the, the recitals. Uh, this is an agreement between uh, the foundation and the city of Palm Springs. Um, our first issue comes in obligations of the city, Roman numeral one. Part B, as in boy, coordination. And so the idea here is that um. The city would uh, provide. Support for mutually agreed upon foundation programs, budgets, projects, et cetera. Provide staff consulting and technical assistance. For those mutually agreed uh, projects, assist the foundation coordination with other city agencies. And hold a regular meeting um, at a minimum annually. Our question is who at the city would be our? Um, point person or who is the point person for the city? For us? Um, how would we access these resources and, and um? And so on.
I'm, I'm your staff liaison with the city.
Okay, so Ginny, it would be you, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, we thought so, but that it's good to clarify that. Um.
But let's uh, not use Ginny, let's use Ginny's title.
Well, it could be me or my designated seat too as well, like Julie or Lisa. Or uh, uh, let's say you're doing something in a library and helps you, but that's, I think that's why they kept it generic. Because it's staff.
Yeah. So something like uh, la- la- uh, Director of Library Services and, and staff. Or related staff, something like that.
I think that was a question.
Sorry.
Ginny's, Ginny's writing that down.
Okay.
Well, I just don't know, I mean. Um, I'm sure they kept it vague so that we could just say. Staff, you know, it, it. I don't know what. But um, yeah.
But you would be the first point.
Say that again, Craig.
You'd be the first point of contact.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, okay. And, and that's what we thought, but I think it's good to, to put that out there, so um, it's not vague. Um, okay, then, next item. Goes to. Obligations of the foundation, which is Roman numeral two. And I think this is on page three and under um, governance and administration, which is a small A. There's a entry on um, small A four. Authorize the city to use the name and the logo of the foundations to promote the foundation and activities. And of course. We like that, we're. We can use the logo of the city. Um, per this agreement and so on, but we would like to see. How the city might want to be u- using us because we're going to be spending. Some time and effort. To build a, a positioning within the community. And so if the city wants to use that, could we just request that, that we see that um, prior to that? Uh, going out into the, into the public domain.
Can you tell me where that is in this document again? I got lost.
Yes, it's on uh, Roman numeral two obligations of the foundation. And then there's a small A governance slash administration and then it's. Um, four.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
You would like to review?
Yeah, we just kind of want to see. How that's being positioned and, and, and make sure that we're communicating that it's consistent with. The way we're positioning the foundation.
Okay.
Um, and then the next item, uh, five. This is regards to dissolution and, and what do we do with the funds um, and so on, so this. Idea of, of dissolution and um, what do we do with the funding? This, this appears three or four times. Uh, i- in the document. We're, we're not taking it personally, um, but uh, the uh. We laughed a little bit about it, but we do have um. In our, as it says here, in our foundation articles of incorporation in the bylaws, we do have. An entry which we think is pretty clear and David, do you have that um? That you might be able to read to us?
Yeah. I mean. It's really simple in our, in, in our. And you guys probably know this, but it just says upon dissolution or winding up of the corporation. Its assets remaining after payment or provision for payment, payment. Of all debts and liabilities of this corporation shall be distributed to the Palm Springs Public Library System. Or such organizations organized and operated exclusively for the public and charitable purposes. Which has established its tax exempt status under section blah, blah, blah. And that's it, so I mean, yeah, it is in our. Articles of incorporation that. If we dissolve the foundation, the money will go to. The Palm Springs Public Library, not the city. I mean, I realize it's the same thing, but we want to make sure that. It goes to the library.
And that's important to be consistent with fundraising and um. At the end of the day, if the donors uh, ask that or there's a bequeathment or something, we can always say, look, if. If we um, if we go out of business for whatever reason. All the funds that you're donating are going to make their way to support the library. So that's sort of, you know, kind of how we want to do it. So Ginny, I, you know, the request would be if. The attorney could look at where those entries occur and just sort of make them consistent to the spirit of. The article, of what David just uh, read in the articles of incorporation. Because that's.
Uh, David, was that article nine?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm guessing.
I see the redundancy that you're talking about in this, in this document, you've got to a section five and then. On the next page to see section four. But it's also a little more elaborate on that dissolution, talks about article nine. So uh, yeah, I'll have them check redundancies for that and it makes sense to just say it once, I think.
Perfect.
Yeah.
It's the one.
Yeah, as long as it's, it's in there. Because.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's not in there, um, the foundation can change their policies.
Right.
Being addressed here, so.
Right, so it needs to be in there. It needs to be in there, yeah, there's no doubt about that. We don't object to that at all. Uh, okay, now, uh, the next item is real, is going to be simple because we know the answer already. Under B coordination, just following uh, what we just looked at. Um, it says work with city staff and our. We're interpreting that Ginny to be you and your team.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and the board, it says, and the board of trustees to coordinate on our, on our work and our programs, et cetera. Okay, um.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Ginny, so this city staff. Uh, on these different items, let's, let's insert uh, your position. And staff, okay?
Good. Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that helps, that helps. Uh, okay, then the next point comes. In that same uh, B coordination section. Um, the, the, the last uh. Entry there, which is what, uh, three. Um, it talks about. Reporting by annual reports to the directory of library services. Um. Uh, provide those uh, to uh, Ginny on the first in the, of February, the first of August. And then provide financial records as requested by the city within thirty days. Excuse me, um, and I think David Sidley had a, a comment about that um, in terms of. Where we sit with that and David, did you want to um, articulate your concern there?
Yeah, so um. It seems a, a bit much and it seems like a big ask, you know, um. We, when the ball gets rolling and assuming the ball does get rolling and this, you know, it gets big and we're working with millions of dollars. We need to protect our donors, you know, especially those that, that, that request anonymity and we need to um. It just. I mean, my comment on the, in the paragraph says no, so, but I don't want to. I mean. It seems like too much. It just seems like we shouldn't have to. Give those kind of detailed reports to the city because then they become public. And. We're not a public entity, so I think we need, I mean. I understand what, what, that, what, what the intent of this paragraph is, I just think we, we, we somehow need to modify it. So that you guys get the information you want without us giving you everything.
And I have a suggestion on that for the um, where to, because I don't expect um, donor information and donor. Dollar amounts to be tied to people, I, in my uh. In my understanding, in a way to keep it private, I would say maybe you wanted to add the word. Um, where it says. Showing all donations. Showing all donations, instead of saying all donations, just say all donation amounts or something like that, or donation. Totals, or something that just says, we receive donations totaling fourteen thousand dollars and. Because I don't, I don't, I understand exactly what you're talking about, I, and I'm not the Board of Trustees, but um. You know, it's not my say, but uh, I understand exactly where you're coming from about protecting the anonymity of your donors.
But, yeah, and and like, for example, where's? In this paragraph, it says the number of in- individuals that attended each event, we don't have any idea how many people came to write on the page. So.
I mean, I think you're, I think we're looking for the number of tickets you sold, there would be an example that's what you would say. But I suggest that you you put on there. Parenthetical donations, you could put. Uh, so define those donations to be. Uh, it would be ex- um, exclude any donations given. What was the word you used? Uh, anonymously or. Um, some sort of saying that that you're going not, you you would not release the names of donors in those reports. I think you could certainly clarify that here. Um, and I don't think that there would, I don't think the city would push back on that.
But you know, let me, let me, let me say something too, like, for example, this this brunch that's coming up. It's not gonna have anything to do with any money that came from the city. So it it, you know, why would we report that to you guys? So I'm thinking, maybe we can change this. This paragraph to say that any. Any money that we borrow or that ever that gets granted to us or that we borrow. That there will be conditions on that money that wo- there would be specific reporting.
I couldn't support that, I I think that all money you raised, we should know about. I mean, I I don't think there should be any, that that's the, that's the spirit from the attorneys, I don't think that they would. Any of us would agree that you raise money from an event and you're not reporting to us that you raised that money and how much. I I don't think that you can do, I don't think you can do that, not in, not a, not as part of the city, a city department.
But we're not a city department.
But you're, but you're raising money for a city department. You you have to understand, David, that a lot of concerns, people may question, but where'd that money come from? You know, are you, are you getting money from drug cartels? I mean, you you've got to, I know you're not. But I mean, I think you've got to be transparent where the money's coming from. Protecting individuals who may not want to release their names, I I got you on that, I I support that. And I know that could very well happen, but I think that if you have an event, it should be in your report that you had a brunch on April first and you raised. Five thousand dollars. What what's the harm in sharing that with the city and with the Board of Trustees?
And and David, let me tell you, my concern is, I would like to know if you have an event, what your expenses are. And what your income is, because uh, as a trustee, I may be voting on investing in the foundation for an event. And so I'd like to know the history behind it and not just guess.
Okay.
But I, I don't.
Yeah, I.
I particularly not care about who donates money to you. I don't wanna know the individual names, I don't need that.
Okay, okay. I think, um. I think there's a way to um, achieve both of our goals and I, you know, David and I get what you're saying too. Um, from transparency standpoint, and certainly, we're gonna be creating uh, project. Reports on all of these fundraising projects, because we wanna know too. How effective we are, wh- which one goes forward, um, this one didn't work, we're gonna deep six that. We're gonna go forward with the, with this one because it did well. Uh, so we need to measure ourselves too. Um, part of it is, um, we're just getting started. We've got one treasurer and and he needs help, so we we uh. We're trying to get some people in there that could help with this type of uh, accounting and and so on. Um, so.
Bill, I think you should put in here what, again, this exercise is, you guys should put in what you feel strongly about. But understand that the city attorneys are gonna come back with something else if they don't agree with that.
Yes.
But if you, if you put in here that. You know, you don't feel that you should be report, I can guarantee they're gonna come back and say, no. Here's, here's the amount of information we are gonna require from you and your reports. And they're probably not gonna budge on that, you certainly can try. But I can't imagine they're gonna allow you to raise money and not include that in your financial reports to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, okay.
Give it a try, I mean, you know, it's negotiations for a reason, try whatever you want.
Nah, we don't wanna go around the Mulberry Bush on that, we. With legal wordsmithing, I I mean, I think the way to deal with this one is, maybe what we could do, David Sidley is, um. You and I could talk about this again, and then. When we see Genie uh, tomorrow afternoon, uh, before our meeting or after our meeting, we can give her uh, our, our uh. Maybe some proposed language or something.
How about this for a compromise, maybe you say the foundation shall provide. Buying your reports to be defined by the Director of the Library and the. The Executive Board of the Lib- uh, the Library Foundation, give yourself some room for talking about what the, you know.
Yeah.
What what's needed from you guys, so that you don't over-report, but at the same time, you don't under-report.
Yeah.
You know, you 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 can easily insert that and then ask the city attorney to maybe help you identify what those are, give you examples.
Okay.
If you're in the spent investments from the trustees, they're gonna wanna see a history of how successful you have been in fundraising. So keep that in mind. Because I don't think we're gonna give a blank check, I think we're gonna do diligence on this. And and hopefully work together so that you're gonna be successful as well as we are.
Yep.
Yeah, and we 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 have the numbers, it's just. Okay, you know, I got it.
We can work that one out, I think, we know where you're coming from, we know where. Uh, the city's coming from, we know where we're coming from, and I, I, there's room to get, to get to yes on that one. Um, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Something real quick, I would just say, and in the foundation's defense, as someone who writes grants and receives grant money from. Organizations, I don't have to report to them. About my other events and my other. Fundraising skills or activities, I I will, I sometimes I have to give them a um, an annual budget or. Or things, you know, things like that, but um. Yeah, it it feel, uh, honestly, this feels a little. Um. Uh, very stripped on what what's being asked, uh, we don't ask the friends for this information either. Um. So.
Remember, any, the friends give money, they don't borrow money from the trust.
Sure, of course, yeah, but um, just, just as a, you know, side note that. I I don't have to often report a lot of details about other activities that I do. When I'm not borrowing the money from, you know, asking for a grant. Um, for a specific program, I don't report about the other programs that I do.
That's why I'm suggesting it be defined by you and by the the um, the Board of the Foundation. What you might need, I mean, I don't want, I don't, I don't want you guys to over. Communicate, but I don't want you to under-communicate either.
Right.
What's on my, I I guess my question is, if I'm a donor and I'm gonna give you two million dollars, I might wanna see some of these detailed information. Are you gonna provide that to a donor as part of the process as well? Would you give that information freely? They don't have to answer that question, but I'm saying that I think there's gonna be instances where some of this information may have to be shared with people outside of the. The. The group, I guess, is what I'm saying, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Ask the, uh, ask the sea, let's see attorney representatives, ask them what they're, what they were thinking there, I I can't remember, do you, Greg or Genie, what they were asking for?
Uh, I I thought we were kinda leaning towards a profit loss on events, and that was.
That's what I thought so too, but.
And if you guys can live with that, I I think that helps us out at our end.
Yep. Isn't there really? Sorry.
Yes, David.
Uh, it, isn't that really the thrust of this whole section to, for us as the. Um, suppliers of the capital, basically. To understand how effective and efficient the fundraising is going, that's really the intent of this semi-annual reporting. Uh, and I don't, I mean, that seems reasonable, uh. You know, to to know, gosh, this part isn't working, that part was, is working really well, uh. That seems like knowledge that we all would want to have and share.
But you're certainly right, it could be a profit and loss. With some narrative around it that says, you know, we have five fundraisers and this is how much money, I mean. You know, it we we may, it may not, we may be overthinking this, it may not be for the detail of who who wrote checks, but more of. How you're doing financially as an, as an organization.
Exactly, we did this campaign, nobody gave to it, it felt, you know. Cost us ten thousand dollars and we made ten. Uh, we spent ten dollars on the other one and we made ten thousand, you know, I mean, that's the sort of thing we wanna know about.
Okay.
And that's what we can easily provide.
Yep. I think, I think that's good. So we'll, um, Genie, we'll huddle, huddle up with you tomorrow afternoon. And um, we'll get, we'll get that wordsmithed right, um, and I think we can, we'll come to an agreement on that one.
Yeah, so. Genie, when you get that from the foundation, can you please send it out to the uh, trustees, please?
Uh huh, sure, and I'll, I'll have to send it to the attorney too.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Bill, uh, we're next.
We're, we're going down to C Finances, um, the second entry there, uh, double I. And this says that we donate interest on the funds to the city to support the operation and ongoing maintenance of the Palm Springs Public Library System. Um, I. We, we, um. We feel that we are the. Uh, fundraisers in the relationship. And how we invest that. And what we do with interest and or. Um, real estate that's given to us or. Uh, any type of asset that that we we really need to want, we want to have the flexibility to to do. With, with that, what what we will, so. Yes, in fact, if we have an an endowment going, um. That's where we would, uh, the the interest on on, um. Or the gain in mutual funds, for example. Would be the source of of that, but this, this seems too. Um, micromanaging to us and. We would like to see that struck.
Cause it's so vague. You know, interest on what, on everything we have? And why would we do that? You know, it doesn't, I mean, from the, from the standpoint of the. Foundation, why would the foundation? Give the interest income to the city?
It does not specify when you would do that.
Right, but it specifies that we will.
Why would you, why would you, and I I guess I'm not clear too, why would it say donating the interest? On the funds to the cit- ci- city to support the operation and ongoing maintenance of private library system? Unless that's simply a way of returning that. That kind of uh, growth is in support of the library, the foundation is to support the foundation, so. I mean, the support the library.
Exact, I mean, I, you're hitting it right on the head, L, our whole reason for being is to provide uh, financial, long-term financial support to uh. To the, to the public library. So to, just to say that, well, your interest on the funds, well. What funds? Uh, for example, we, we're probably gonna go into a modality here where. Uh, most of the money that we raise, the lion's share is gonna go into the renovation project. And it's not gonna go in into interest-bearing accounts. Um, for the purposes of creating interest value to then subsequently give over to the city, so. We're just saying we, it's the, that sort of ties our hands and um. Right now. I don't, we, we don't think that's um. Material, material, really.
The the agreement that was developed between the Plaza fundraising and the city was used as a, an example to build this document. So my guess is this might be something that came over, I suggest you strike it and ask. And let the city attorneys come back with if, something else.
Right. Yep.
Or that it be posted directly with the public library, doesn't have to go through the city, does it?
I think that's what the city means, is it, it'll go into the library fund, but you just refer to the city as the.
Yeah.
The city, right?
Right.
David, let me just ask you this question, so when you say your money is going. To be, be given to the library, do you state all donations and fundraising? And do you include interest that you receive in that? Or are you just saying that you're gonna give us all the donation money and you're gonna give us the uh. Uh, money that you're doing your fundraising? I I I think that they're trying to do is. Bring all the three different ways you can raise money that make sure it's going to the library, but. I don't know if that is stated in your rules, your policies.
Yeah, yeah.
It isn't, it isn't stated that everything we. I mean, it's, you know, it's stated that we exist for the purpose of supporting the library.
Right.
But you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff, if you look at the, at the document as a whole, I think you're right, Ed, I mean, this, this clip. It it kind of indicates that the, that the. The way it's written, and I'm just commenting, is that the foundation is temporary, which may be the foundation that, the, the, the theater. Foundation is temporary, and as soon as the theater's done, it's gonna dissolve, and and it exists only to support the. Theater, and I guess in a way, the foundation exists only to support the library, but. You know, the the foundation will continue to operate, and it's going to need its own money to operate, and it just seems like at some point. You know, we're gonna have to be self-sustaining, and this MOU will go away, and, you know. I don't know, it just, it just seems weird that, that this, that. The city would have its hand in the foundation's pocket like that. Hey, um, Genie, can you, uh, when you meet with, talk with the attorneys, would you have them? Uh, review that with you, so we can get a clarification?
Yeah, definitely, I'm making notes.
It's right now, we're kind of guessing.
Yeah. Okay, that was a, that was a good discussion on that, um, the next item is a similar item, we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on it. Uh, C Finances four, this is again, another dissolution. Um, uh, entry and and uh, David, uh, that was. A very good comment you made about the potentially uh. A finite uh, uh, beginning, middle and end for. Um, the Plaza Theater Project and and ours being much more um, enduring. Um, so, so again, uh, Genie, that, that's one of those we want. Just to clarify or. You know. Restructured and eliminate some of those redundancies or, and that kind of thing, that's all. Um, and then.
And Genie, they could put, it refers back to where it's listed the first time.
You're right.
Yeah, I just wrote check redundancy and um. Because it is in there multiple times and it probably only needs to be in there once.
Yeah, but they could.
Maybe shouldn't say upon dissolution, but in the case that there is, kind of like if. There is a dissolution, this is what will happen, but.
Yeah.
Not expecting you to dissolve, but just, Chris, when you would follow your articles.
Okay, great, um, Roman numeral three, naming rights. Moving right along, uh, on page five. There's um, number is uh, letter C. Cities, cities prior approval, and so. Um, there's a, there's a, a series of of requirements that that we would. Step up to, um, as we market the naming rights opportunities. Uh, on behalf of the, the city and the library, uh, which are great. Um, the, that Roman, the small uh, Roman numeral, city manager has the authority to approve or dis. Disapprove a proposed naming rights opportunity up to a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so here. Um, do we? I- is it all? Of these, what if somebody gives us fifteen hundred dollars to buy a bu- a bookcase or something, I mean, do we have, does the? And and we wanna put their name on, on uh. On that uh, or a shelf or something like that, I mean, do. Does the city really want us to come to them uh, for, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars? I I totally understand twenty-five thousand or higher, um, or, or a number that, um. Is material or 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 is not gonna be sort of a mass marketed type of a thing. Um, and certainly, the next entry, which talks about more than a hundred thousand. Is great, um, and that would require city council approval. Um, and then there's provisions for, um, somebody that gets named that. Either the foundation, the library, or the city don't, doesn't want to have their name associated with it anymore, there's provisions for that too. So, um, but this one, um, you know, it's just a question. Um, to us, that, that, that's a lot of, of bookkeeping and, and so on, on the other hand, um, you know, where, where is the, uh, the city resting on that?
I can answer that, so, um, you would have to run everything through me anyway, because we would have to work, coordinate with you to place things or get things ordered to pl- perplex or whatnot.
Yep.
So we, you would have to work with us anyway. I mean, to make sure that there is a shelf to be named or that we didn't, it didn't break and get thrown away, I'm just making up a story, but, you know. So you have to work with me anyway for that, but the city manager has the signing authority, um, for all things up, up to a hundred thousand dollars at the city without having to take it to city council, so. It may seem like it's, um, a lot of detail, but really it would be simple things, like I would probably just say, you know. And, and we done shelves here that we don't even take to the city manager, we just, we just do it, but because I have authority up to a, my authority is twenty-five thousand dollars, so. Um, maybe we would, maybe you wanna add something that everything under twenty-five thousand just coordinates through me and then up to a hundred thousand goes to the city manager. If we wanted to stick strictly with the signing rights that, that I have.
Let's, let's, let's do that, Jeannie, I like that, because you're absolutely right, you know, we're, we're gonna have mutual agreement uh, on projects, on naming opportunities, how we fundraise, everything's gotta be in tight coordination. And therefore, yeah.
Bill, you're, you're okay with that, right, Bill? What, did you just recommend it? I just wanna find where the trustees are. Uh, are the trustees okay with that recommendation coming from Jeannie that up to twenty-five thousand goes through the regular process now? Having her involvement and anything above twenty-five to a hundred would go to city manager?
This seems reasonable to me.
That seems fine.
Okay, Al, you good?
Yes.
Ed, okay.
Super. Thank you. Okay. We are zoom, zooming right along now to section five, insurance.
Wait, excuse me, um, Bill, can I say something?
Oh, yes, I, I probably forgot something, David.
Yep, two things, the first thing is you know, once we, the ball gets rolling and we know what the project is and the budget and everything, we, we're gonna create categories for naming rights and stuff like that, so this won't be so as abstract. The, the second thing, which I think is very important, is that we think the foundation should have exclusive naming rights. Um, because there should be one entity that's managing the naming rights, so that if, if a donation comes in to the trustees or to the library for a million bucks and they wanna name the auditorium, and we've been working with Mrs. S for two years, whining and dining her, and she's committed to the million dollars, we're gonna have a huge problem, so. We need, we need to put some language in there, we, the foundation believes that we, we have the exclusive right, the exclusive naming rights, that's not to exclude anyone. You know, we, we will work with whoever, but one person needs to drive that ship, I believe, or one entity.
Uh, David, have you talked to Nancy about that?
No.
Okay, well, we have a player here that might wanna have something named or organization.
For sure.
Before we proceed here, um, we need to have it checked out with Nancy.
Yeah, and I don't wanna exclude her, I just, I just think, you know, same thing.
And maybe there's a cutoff on, or how you guys work together as a team for a large dollar amounts, but they get a lot of dollar amounts under that twenty-five thousand that we don't wanna say no to. So we're gonna have to come up with some way to work this through.
Yeah. Okay.
But, Jeannie, do you have any ideas on that?
Uh, no, I'm not sure, um, I was just reading the section three, um, paragraph A where it talks about the rights. And it says that the foundation shall have the right to issue naming right opportunities. And then it talks about the term. Uh, it doesn't say exclusive right, but it does say have the right. So I don't know if you want the word exclusive, if you're proposing that you have the word exclusive and that you are the exclusive. Um, the fa- the friends could coordinate with all of us together as well, because I know the friends have, uh, money that they had set aside years ago that they wanted to have a naming right already set up for a cho- for the children's room, so.
For sure.
That would be something to talk about.
Yeah, and, well, they would.
I experience in other foundations that usually the foundation does have the exclusive rights for naming and all, all other bodies go through them to, to establish that, so, I mean, I, I can support that. I, I think it's, it's just we need to have someone to coordinate all of that, because you're being held responsible for all those, those rules. Even if Nancy raised her hand and said, I've got ten million dollars and we wanna name the auditorium, they're not ex- they're not exempt from the city rules that you're being held accountable to, they'd still have to go through the same thing. So why not use the foundation to go through that process of getting those naming authorities? I just think it makes sense to have, I think it'll be cleaner and I think it would be it, it just more organized, so I, I, I think it's okay to have one group be responsible for it.
Yeah. The other group to weigh in on it and so that we don't have an issue coming up. Uh, maybe there's, uh, Jeannie, what's the lowest amount we name anything for? Is it a shelf?
Um, I think, I think that was the lowest gift, well, twenty dollars for a book or, you know, twenty, twenty-five dollars for a book. You know, we do, we do that, we put bookplates in books often. Um, so yeah, twenty-five dollars is probably the lowest donation um, that you can get something named uh, put in your name or in a memory.
I'm gonna throw it back to you, Dave, David, do you wanna be involved in bookplates?
Yes, no. I want everything, no. I, you know, maybe we could, we could somehow change the language that it says we have the exclusive right, naming rights for items associated with this renovation project or something like that, so that they can keep doing the bookplates and the, the friends, you know, I mean.
Well, David, it could be the dollar limit, maybe, maybe you said it that you have exclusive rights for anything over a certain amount of money. That, that, I mean, I don't think you guys wanna get into bookplates, but I mean, I think that you certainly, if it's, if it's on this list, maybe that's the limit, right? I mean, so what's the first level?
I think it's five thousand.
Maybe you think over five thousand, you know, it comes through you.
This does give an example, it does examples of naming right opportunities include, but on our, not our lim- are not limited to the library, the lobby rooms, other facilities and improvements. So it's really talking about physical spaces, it's not even mentioning water fountains and chairs and fish.
But if we, you know, if we're charged with, with getting new furniture and we get a big donor who wants their name on every chair, we're gonna have to say yes, you know.
Well, and the, and, um, as a practical.
More than five thousand dollars, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But as it, but as a practical matter too, um, if the, the friends they would need to have a MOU with the city anyway, also, I suppose. Um, for substantial amounts of money. Um, whereas if we teamed up, and, and I think part of what we're saying here is there needs to be coordination between the entities that raise money for the public library and if we could put some, uh, some language in there that, that we're all, that we're working together. Um, but that, uh, the foundation, uh, is the point person on this, then maybe we're doing of the best thing we can do in this area.
And.
I think that's absolutely right, I, I'm sorry, I think that that's absolutely correct, we have to have a point person or a point organization that does this. Um, in working with our church and doing the same thing, it became really problematic where people were going out and saying, okay, well, this person's gonna donate five thousand dollars and so their name is going to be at the top of this plaque that they were building with this circle plaque, and somebody else had promised it to someone else, and there, there was a problem. Cause now we had two people that had to be first on this plaque, so I think it's really important that we do have just just the foundation be in charge of that naming because there, we can't have that kind of confusion, so if you've got someone who wants their name on this plaque, for example, you need to say to them, if I'm with the friends, that's great, that's wonderful, we love it, let's talk to the foundation and then talk to you, and you are the person, the people that, that decide that and do that. I, we can't have too many cooks in this pot.
Right.
Well said.
Um.
Well said.
Okay, because sometimes I like to kick the ball down the field. Can we, uh, Jeannie, can you set up a meeting, if trustees are okay with this? For, uh, David and Bill to meet with Nancy and another representative from the uh, friends and, uh, myself and one other trustee. Are the trustees would be okay with that, we can kinda hammer this part out? Okay. I see a thumbs up from David, uh.
Good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, uh, Jeannie, I get back, uh, and this is, at the rate we're going, this is not gonna hit hard board. Uh, next board meeting for approval for a while, so, Jeannie, I get back on the twenty-fifth of January. Um, so if you can set it up anytime based upon David and Nancy's schedule. And is there a trustee that would like to be involved along with me on this? Not all at once, I.
Do the foundation members wanna do that, is, are you all conducive to have this meeting too?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I needed a board member.
Ed.
Ed, I, I don't know how long I'm, I've got left, guys, I don't, you know, this. I'm happy to help, yes, I'll do it, if you need my help, Craig, you know I help.
Great, alright, so Ed and I, and if you can set that up, Jeannie, anytime after the twenty-fifth of January.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, and then I think we're gonna address that item and make it easy for him, and, and David or Bill have, either one of you met with uh, the people doing the theater to see how they're handling their naming rights? Examples that they're saying, this is worth this much, this is worth that much. Have you had that?
I have not.
Any, any. Naming rights at other libraries, but not, we haven't talked to the foundation here, I mean, to the theater.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the theater's local, they might know the economics of, of what we're pushing here. Uh, so if you can get that information, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, okay.
Alright, Bill, what do you have next?
Um, we're, uh, now we're zooming, we're zooming down to five insurance, uh, Dave, unless David has another issue that I'm skipping, but.
No, I've rocked the boat enough.
Okay, so, um, in, in insurance, um, we, we do have, uh, directors and liability insurance, officer insurance, et cetera. Um, it says, we need coverage in amounts uh, as requested by the city's risk manager. So, um, I don't, I, David and I can't find any information in our files that we ever got the current risk manager level of insurance recommendation. Um, and so I'm just wondering, um, it's, I guess that language is good if we could get a current copy of that before we sign. So we can make sure, yeah, so we can make sure we have the right levels.
Right.
Jeannie, you got that?
Um, yeah, and I know, I, I, I know this is vague because it will change year after year.
Yeah.
I'm sure they kept that vague on purpose, but we, yeah, I'll say you don't know what the amount is.
Yeah, a- at least at signing, we, we ought to have a, uh, something.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, on, uh, uh, section six amendment renewal and termination, um, on part D, there's another distribution of proceeds on expiration. So, so we're dying a thousand deaths in, in, before we even get rolling here, but anyway, um, on, uh, uh, let's see, dispute resolution number eight, Roman numeral eight, dispute resolution. Okay, this paragraph just hit us as being awkward. Um, obviously, we, we, we agree to work together in good faith to resolve any disagreements. Um, and it says, should a disagreement arise, the parties have the authority to resolve the dispute via a meeting and negotiate in good faith, and if we can't uh, resolve the disagreement, then you go to other dispute resolution processes like arbitration, I would imagine. But the, then, the last sentence says, however, if at any time a party determines that circumstances so warrant, such party may seek any available remedy without waiting to complete the informal meet and confer process, so. You're, they're saying, um, here's the process, and then they're pulling the rug out from under the process right away. Um, so you know, this, I, I would like that language to sort of be cleaned up, I mean, are we gonna have a dispute resolution process? Or are we not? Um, the other thing that is germane to this is that either party can terminate with thirty days written notice. So um, we have some agita about having to dissolve our fundraising and our funds when we're, when the city can simply write a memo to us and then we've gotta shut down the operation and then we gotta give all the money to, uh, uh, to the, to the library. Um, and, and, and this is sort of part and parcel to that, uh, there's no, uh, we, you know, we wanna, we wanna resolve disputes, we don't wanna have any disputes, but if there were, there should be a little bit more normal process other than saying, um, oh, well, if we don't wanna go through the hassle of resolving and meeting and trying to resolve it, then we'll just, we'll just pull the rug out from under you, do you, are you seeing, you guys seeing that?
I'm not seeing it that way, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't see it that way either, frankly, yeah.
Okay, well, explain to me then, what, what do you think that this says, that last sentence?
Well, I think it, uh, relates back to the disagreement. It doesn't, it does not have anything to do with saying cease and desist, you don't exist anymore. Um, it, I think it only relates to that disagreement and and maybe the MOU, if the MOU goes away, you guys don't go away.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that either, Bill.
No, you don't, it's, apart from that, yeah.
You're existing without an MOU right now.
Right.
But, but let's talk, so let's just talk about that dispute resolution paragraph, I mean, that is a little odd, that we're agreeing to, I mean, it goes both ways, I mean, we're agreeing to, to resolve any dispute amicably and then, well, we, we're gonna call a lawyer instead because we, you know, we don't want to.
Right, and it's weird, I agree that needs to be cleaned up, but I, um, okay. So, uh, Jeannie, if you can mark that, that last sentence bothers me a little bit too.
Yeah.
Well, the meet and confer is really, uh, very union language that we do here in the city for our union employees, we have a meet and confer process, so I'm wondering if that came from something else, it's kind of, more the.
I, I don't see any issues that we can't resolve.
No.
But you always plan for those that you don't anticipate.
That's right, Al.
That's the whole point of insurance.
Have a contract, right, yeah.
Exactly.
I think, I think the, the, uh, point of the, of this is, if if someone's money laundering and there's a egregious mess of a problem, they're gonna, you know, do not pass go, go straight to, you know, do not, just go straight to an attorney and take care of this, you know, that's maybe what it means.
Yeah, and if that's true, I mean, I don't think we have a problem with egregious, you know.
Honestly, the, the way I read it, it's just sequential. Um, if, if a disagreement arises, then you try to resolve it. And if it can't be resolved through the normal process, then you'd seek alternative dispute resolution, and if that doesn't work, uh, then you seek some available remedy without waiting to complete the formal, so I don't really see that it does anything other than just sequentially say, here are the steps to follow. It doesn't say you blow up the foundation at the end or anything else, it just simply says you look for other alternatives. I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not uncomfortable with the wording. I don't think it's egregious at all, but others of you may be see a different side to that, I.
I do, because.
And, and I'm sorry, David, but I, I, I mean, right now, we're all goods and friends. But next week, we could all disagree vehemently and, and go into some type of arbitration, I mean, one never knows, yeah, I mean, that's the whole point of insurance, as you say. I mean, one never knows. Yeah, I mean, that's the whole point of insurance, as you say, one protection for both sides and, and type of a reasonable process. I'm sorry, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why we would waive the informal process.
That's what seems a little odd to me.
Well, the way I read it was if one side becomes intractable and prevents you from proceeding, then the only alternative you have left is the other party is to waive that informal process and seek a more formal process. I'm assuming with the city or somebody else, that, that's, that's the only way that I can read it.
I just think it's very poorly written. I think it could be written in a different way.
I do too.
I would agree with that.
I mean, if things get really, really bad between the city and the foundation, you know, this MOU isn't going to mean anything.
No. Could it apply between the library trustees and the foundation though?
Not as it's currently drafted.
Okay. It was a bit of a question because I don't know the answer to that.
Cause the way it's set up is, um, foundation city.
Right, okay.
With, with, with importantly, some conditions for the foundation to approach the trustees for funding.
Okay.
Um, which, which is good. Um, and which we didn't have any issue with at all, actually, so.
But Jeannie, can you share with the attorneys, um, the concerns that have been raised about this article here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's the reason.
Yep.
And Al, or everybody, if, if I can just make one comment too about what the point that Al just made. It's a really good point and it did come up in our discussion. That, that this MOU is between the city of Palm Springs and the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. But it doesn't really give the Board of Trustees a right to interfere and it doesn't really give, and I, what, what I mean interfere, I mean be involved. And it doesn't really give the, the, any city, specific city staff the right to be involved. I mean, it is a little obscure. Or unless I'm reading it wrong. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but. I mean, maybe you guys on your end want to want to put some language in there that the trustees has the authority to negotiate on behalf of the city in this, in this MOU or whatever. You know, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can do that for the city.
You know, because if, if there, if there is a, of if there, I mean, let's say worst case scenario, there is some weird issue where we can't agree. I mean, we're not going to be talking to you. We're going to be talking to what? The city attorney or the city council or the mayor? I mean, it's, you know, what do we do?
David, can you give me an example where you would disagree?
I, I'm so agreeable, I, you know. No, I don't know. I mean, let, let's say we, you know, I'm, I guess, you know, money makes people crazy. So let's say we get a big donation and who knows, they want to paint the library pink, but they're giving us ten million bucks and we're all for it and everybody else is against it, but ten, I know, how can we walk away from ten million bucks? And it turns into a big dust up and we're all fighting with each other. I mean, you know, who do we go to to resolve that dispute? I mean, it's such a weird example, but you know.
Well, the city council, the city council has the ultimate authority because they are the, the.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, owners represent, the other representatives.
Yeah, and that's in here.
Okay, for the city, so.
Yeah, there, I mean.
Very example. Raising money for a church.
Yeah.
Good example.
The ci- the city, uh, says, go, go forth and fundraise because we're gonna uh, renovate this library. Uh, and we go out and, and raise money based on that. And then the city changes its mind because there's a new regime or something and says, no, we're not going to allocate that. And so that this becomes a, a, a point of, of friction. Um, and so, anyway, I, we shouldn't even bring these things up because it's, it's bad juju.
Well, and just to be devil's advocate, if that were to happen, um, we could just, we could just, we, the foundation could dissolve the MOU in thirty days and be done and let the city do what they want to do, you know?
Yeah, and your money still dedicated to the library.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There, you know, there was a scenario down the road where, um, a group, a nonprofit group decided to give their money to someone else that wasn't a library. And there was a big dust up and a big problem. You know, anybody remember this? I don't really want to say.
Let us know who's guilty here.
It was our neighbor down the road and they had to, the city had to step in and dissolved the group of the nonprofit and created a new nonprofit.
Oh, I remember reading that.
Yeah, so they wanted to give their money, I don't know, to what? To, um, film festival or something? And that's not what you're designed to do. You're designed to raise money for the library. So there was a big problem. And so this agreement really, I don't know if it really helps or matters, but there are these things that happen, things go sideways sometimes, but.
Okay.
Okay.
The next, the next, there's two, um, just, I'm sorry, Craig.
Eight is going to the attorney to rewrite, give justification, correct, Jeannie?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, the la- there's some housekeeping items. One, um, under the signatory for notices, we use the title president instead of chief executive officer. And then the, uh, on page eight, our new secretary is, um, Serena Lighterman. Um, and Terry has stepped away from the board unfortunately for a while. Um, so that's Serena Lighterman. And then the last thing is exhibit A, which is a schedule on amount donated and the naming rights term. So how long would the library be obligated to, uh, continue with, um, the, 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 the naming rights as, uh, set up at the point of donation? And so, um, you know, this, we, we, I don't think any of us know if this is good or bad or indifferent. It's a good, it's a schedule, so it's down in writing, so that part is good, right? Um, and I think we, our position would be just to strike less than five thousand dollars for one year. Keep the rest of it in there and then, once we do a lot more brainstorming and do a lot more fundraising, we could come back and, and, and propose something to the city to, to make this schedule more realistic. Maybe this turns out to be, you know, right there. Um, and it's good to have a framework to work off of, but that would, that's our suggestion is to get rid of the less than five thousand in one year right now. Keep the rest of it and then make it subject to um, uh, refinement a- as we learn.
Yeah, okay, I, I would agree with that too, Bill, frankly, but.
Yeah, this was just supposed to be, um, discussion point.
Yep.
I think it's a good start.
It is.
The, uh, this is maybe close to what the theater had also, um, indicated that they were doing. Um, but the, less than the five thousand, that can come up in our discussion, uh, at the end of the month with the, uh, friends of the library and Ed and I.
Sure.
But does it read right now, if I contribute a hundred dollars that, and I've decided to name the water fountain, that's good for a year?
Uh, I would like it a little bit.
Yeah, for you, Al, anything is possible.
I'll, I'll give you a hundred dollars for the water.
It might be a posted no on the water.
Visa tape.
Yeah. It's for a commitment like that. That's all my, my point, but yeah.
Okay, any other uh, items, trustees regarding this MOU?
Well, and I just wanted to, um, provide feedback on that. I would like to keep the less than five thousand because what if you do have, what if you do have a price point that's, um, twenty-five hundred or a thousand dollars? We would want a term limit on that just so that if we, um, set a shelf cost, um, dollars, we would like to have, to have a term limit. So uh, that exact scenario happened at Palm Desert. People came looking for their shelves and they all had been shifted around and then we couldn't find where their shelf went and they were.
Jeannie, I, I, I wouldn't mind if the minimum threshold was twenty-five hundred to five thousand, but one to five thousand is just
to. I think it's just being extra clear, just like everything has a time limit.
Yeah. If it's twenty-five hundred, don't look for my naming of the water fountain anymore, so.
And the twenty dollar book plates, we don't keep those books forever because they do fall apart, so.
Right.
You would say, yeah, we can try to keep it a year, but that's about all your record allowed. So that's my feedback on that.
David, do you, is, is it material to you? I mean, it's.
You know, it seems to me like it's, it will be more of a hassle for, for our successors or, or the library to be digging around looking for nameplates to pull off because it, the year has gone by.
Right.
Well, I think the, the point of it is that we don't necessarily have to say that, um, it will at one year, we go around and rip everything off, but we have the ability to do it.
Right.
We get new furniture.
It doesn't, well, it's replaced.
Yeah, and maybe when we, when we do our contract with our donors, we can put the language in there that, that will say it's, it's a a minimum of a year, so that it could be on there forever, but after a year, you know, the shelf might fall apart and.
Perfect. That's a great way of putting it.
So, uh, Jeannie, let's put this on the agenda for, uh, that group meeting at the end of the month.
So, so again, a, a, a huge thank you, um, for those of you that put this draft together with the city and um, it's giving us additional structure. Um, we hope we weren't too burdensome on our, our feedback and, and going through it with you was very valuable as well, so um, thanks, thanks an awful lot.
And, uh, David, you and Bill, for the work that you put on this. You did not take it lightly, took it seriously, and I really wish your input on this. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Um, instead of a motion here, can we, uh, postpone a vote on this item until maybe the next board meeting or until we get, uh, it finalized?
Yes.
Yeah, you would just continue it and just say.
Yeah.
On the next month.
No objection to that?
No.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to, um, item B, and that's the infrastructure, uh, review timeline. That's, uh, the last page, I think, in your packet. Yes. Uh, page twenty-seven. Uh, Jeannie, uh, is this the original one that you had done or is this a revised one?
This is real close to the original one. Um, the only changes I made, so this, um, this document is what, um, we're submitting to the state library, California State Library as part of our paperwork and grant reporting and whatnot, we have to do pretty regularly. The, um, the only, the two lines that I believe the only changes I made were just to the two lines because we were, we're behind schedule already, just by a few months. So I went ahead and set those to start in February, um, trying to keep everything else in its same or similar place. Um, and still shooting for the same finish line, um, December, well, project closeouts, uh, the project construction, our goal is to end it in July of twenty-twenty-five. That gives us six to nine months of time for delays and punch list problems and just general closing out the project. And uh, if you know, on the last item, the celebration one hundredth anniversary of the Palm Springs Library, um, based on our records that we, our research, the, they actually had a library Board of Trustees group established in nineteen twenty-five. So we're going to use that as our hundredth anniversary mark because that was when they first established a, a board, a library board. There were little libraries around town and that, at first we decide, we thought it was nineteen eleven, but, or nineteen nineteen. Since nineteen nineteen, the city of Palm Springs has had a library in the stagecoach station and various hotels around town. That's kind of what the, the Jace Meaton Chase, I think is the name, the author of that, our, our Arabi book. And they talk about the library in that book and they talk about nineteen nineteen, but officially, we're going to go with twenty-twenty-five. So we're going to celebrate a hundred years soon. So, um, yeah, this, um, one, one update, um, Don, you, you know, who, um, you all have seen at some of our meetings, the engineer has, uh, left the employment of the city of Palm Springs and he's, I know, he's, he's gone, um, to another city and, um, we wish him well. We're going to miss him, but I'm very sad because he was assigned to this project. So, um, just heads up. We lost our engineer, but the city has other engineers.
Yeah, but do we become a priority still?
Uh, I had a meeting this week with the interim city manager and I expressed my concerns and, uh, we're going to um, internally discuss amongst ourselves and make sure that we don't get, um, to, that we don't fall through the cracks and don't get in the back of the line because we have a hard deadline.
So is that right? So that you're telling me we're still a priority?
We are, well, me, I, it's a priority to me, of course.
No, I mean with the city.
It should be because we've committed the funds, we have the resolution approved to match the funds. We've told the state library we can handle this and so it has to be a priority.
It really does. What can we do as trustees to ensure that becomes a, continues to be a priority? Uh, you're using a little bit of conditional language and I understand why, I would too in your position. Uh, but the fact remains, it's been my concern all along, as you know, in terms of the continuing commitment of the city to move forward, regardless of whatever reasons were. It's just, I know how government works unfortunately. So is there anything we could or should be doing, Craig, as trustees to make sure that we continue since the engineer who was assigned our project is no longer there for us?
And he just left last week, so it's just been a couple of days. But, um, I, well, I know you ask, Craig, but I would say you are our biggest advocates. And you are the voice.
So the question is to Craig, what is our strategy?
Yeah, I'm.
As advocates.
Well, the last time we tried to meet with the mayor, we, uh, we were directed towards meeting with the interim city manager. And I'm thinking that, well, shoot, they, the city manager's decision hasn't been made. The new one, they haven't decided yet, correct?
Right, right.
And there's another round of interviews coming up?
I'm not sure if it's coming up or that just happened, but what, you might know.
No, they, they did just have, uh, but there is another one coming, another round coming. So, yeah, they're not, they're not quite there yet as far as deciding on the city manager.
Did, uh, have they narrowed, is the same candidates coming back? Did they narrow it down to two or three?
They've definitely narrowed it down. I don't know that, if it's two or three or it's four, I don't know that number, but I do know that they've narrowed it down and they are looking at some, you know, really closely, a couple of people very closely. So hopefully it will be soon.
So, my, my, maybe we can bring this up at the next meeting, uh, agendas. It seems to me we need a strategy. I, as I say, you've known my skepticism from the very beginning and it took me on at one meeting about it and, and, uh, I, I just want to be sure we stay alert to this and we continue to press.
I, I I just want to say, I can tell you this, that our current mayor is a huge supporter of the Palm Springs Library. Uh, grew up in the Palm Springs Library, well, you know, so I, I feel very confident in our current mayor, new mayor, as far as, um, supporting and advocating for the library. I can say that.
And I am delighted that our current mayor does support the library. As you know, I was very supportive for uh, and worked hard to, on her behalf, but I am delighted that she has that commitment. Um, again, as I mentioned in earlier meeting, do the other commission, or commissioners, other city council members have the same degree of commitment and I just want to lock it up. That's all I'm, I'm, that's all.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, Ed, you talked with the other candidates, didn't you, that are now on the city council?
Yes.
And weren't you, uh, saying that they were extremely supportive?
Well, I asked them the question in a public forum when they were all running and every one of them said they were committed to the library project. Of course, that was trying, you know, before the election, but I think that, you know, every one of them said that they were committed to this project.
Uh, Jeannie, do you think it's, um, worth our while to meet with the, uh, new ma- new mayor and instead of waiting for the new city manager?
Um, I, I think as citizens, you can choose to do what you want, honestly, um. Um, I see Bill has his hand up.
Well, no, that is, it's a different question on on edge, Jenny. If you wanna answer Craig first, that's fine with me. I just had a follow-up question.
Uh, Craig, let me, let me get my meeting, um, done with my internal staff and see where we're at on that. So, let me work on that.
I'd just like to let them know what our concerns are, and that we're not being forgotten here.
Oh, yeah, your concerns are my concerns too. I've already, I've already expressed them to Teresa and wanna make sure that we don't get forgotten, and what do we need to do to get get these RFPs going? Because that's, yeah, is, we just need to hire the, um, designers and let them do their work and.
And that was my next question is, who's responsible? Um, what's the process for hiring the two consultants that are coming in?
That's what I'm talking about with, uh, with Teresa and the staff, because, uh, currently, uh, engineering projects, the engineering department creates the RFPs and runs those, but, um, we're, we're gonna see if there's something we can do to help them and make sure that they, that that this gets done, so.
And can you let the trustees know when the RFP goes out, please?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, this is, uh, a good timeline, except there's a lot of areas in between that we don't have checkpoints for. And I think that those are important, so if we can define the spaces in between, um, when the, uh, RFP goes out for each of the positions, when they're gonna be um, moved ahead on that. So you have it happening in February. We're in January now.
No, it was, it was written as September, so, uh, we're, we're behind. It does take time, and it take, and and this may be too short of a timeline, February, March, honestly, because it takes time to write the RFP, you have to let it rest and let the, let the businesses put in their proposals. There's time for that, time for reading and reviewing. Uh, then it has to go, you know, go to city council, and then the the times in between is once it's awarded, um, then contracts have to be signed, so it does take a couple of months for a contract to be signed, because they have to prove, provide all their insurance and bonds and whatnot. So, I'll stay on it.
Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, Bill, you had a question?
Yes, I do. Um, I know last meeting, uh, you all had considerable, uh, discussion around uh, the non-funded portion of what we consider sort of the, the vision of the project. Meaning the exterior, exterior of the building, the landscaping, all those elements that are are not part of, um, the matching grant, the grant and the matching. Uh, Jenny, in the, in this timeline, are tho- are those elements being factored into this? Um, yeah, you know, uh, is that, or is there gonna be a sort of a mutually exclusive? We can do these things, and that doesn't negate the other things that we wanna do, um, cause I know we're talking about a lot of elements being coincident in the planning cycle. Uh, because you have to factor in what you're gonna do, um, with the infrastructure, uh, and what you might wanna do outside the building, so.
So my plan, and what I've already reported to the city, is that the trustees and the friends in the foundation, everybody really is focused on, we don't want to settle for infrastructure only. We want, we want the cost estimates for everything. And so I think that what we should put into our packet is that we need we need prices and estimates for Plan A, Plan B, you know? This is, these are the costs for the infrastructure. These are the costs for all the additions. And then we would have the prices, and then they could be, uh, concurrently built, but some of those elements, like you're talking about, the e- exterior, the parking lot, they could happen at the end, you know, and
Right.
Typically, how a construction project happens anyway, the parking lot and the landscaping get done the very last, so it doesn't. But, um, that's my plan, is to, um, to ask, ask for what you all wanted, um, the whole, the whole thing, the full meal deal, and, uh, and prices for both with with like options. So that, um, we can know how much those things are going to cost, and then the city can decide if they want to fund it or ask you to help fund it or partnership with that or whatnot. So, yeah, that's my plan, um, to represent you all and your wishes.
Thank you.
We should have a motion that goes to the city council requesting.
You could. Seven B. You can have a motion to request that.
We can bring that into seven B, cause we're talking about renovation and timeline, so the topic is there.
You could request, um, you could make a motion. Well, you all could tell me what you want, but you can make a motion that, um, the city, um, focus on this timeline and and make sure that, uh, the designers get hired as soon as possible or something.
Yeah, I wanna do that, but I also wanna add in, uh, if they can get the cost on the addition.
You already made that motion before. We already told, told them that.
Did we?
Yeah, the, the last month, you, um, I think the motion, there was a big, big hairball of emotion, wasn't it?
Okay.
December seventh, the meeting. It's probably in the minutes, um.
I've got the minutes.
See, squared it up for me, because it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I see. Yeah, it's under, uh, seven C.
Yeah, and then seven B, you, um, also included the J.C. Frye, so you already.
Okay.
This one is that you can really, um, some sort of emphasis on the timeline.
So, uh, read the recommendation that we should be making right now.
I just said it. I don't know. I didn't write it down.
Not a good.
A motion that the city, uh, focus on hiring the design consultants and designers as soon as possible to keep this project on
Track.
Timeline, on track.
Yeah. Okay, anybody wanna add anything to that motion?
No.
Okay, for that motion, do I have a first?
Moved.
I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, roll call, please?
Sure, just a second. I'm writing down the time so I can go back to the video. Craig Barba?
Yes.
Juanita Gardner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ed McRae?
Yes.
David Norgren?
Yes.
The city council gets back to us on our motion from, uh, last month. Uh, we should share that obviously with the foundation and the friends, so they'll know what, uh, dollar amounts are out there that are not being funded at the present time.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take several months for us to find out that information, because I think the designers are gonna have to tell us. The architects are gonna have to tell us how much this is gonna cost. That makes me think about something that's not on the agenda, but it's something we need to talk about for next month's agenda, um, which is the budget.
Okay.
Hold on just a second. So, um.
And, uh, for the, don't two trustees meet with you regarding the budget?
Yeah, so I need, um, volunteers, um, for a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget ad hoc subcommittee.
Oh, as treasurer, I should be involved, I think.
Yep, and if I look at the budget committee, uh, Juanita, you're on that committee also?
Yes.
Yeah, are you willing to do this?
Yes, yes, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Jenny, you'll set up that pre-meeting with, uh, Alan, Juanita?
Yes, and since it's specifically, um, focused on one short project, which is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, it's not considered a subcommittee that's a public meeting. That's, so since it's a specific project with a specific task, and it's not the full, we don't need to have a public meeting at the public forum.
Right.
Talk to people about things, so it's not like we're keeping secrets, it's just paperwork. Just, I'll, I'll talk to you two about, um, setting a meeting, setting up a meeting, because we're already talking about the budget, and we have to turn in budget recommendations for the library, and so you all should, um, think about what you wanna do with the trust fund, and I'll, um, share with you my budget stuff too, so.
Right.
Work on something.
Okay, moving down to Roman numeral eight, is there any comments from staff or trustees at this time, or future agenda items? And Jenny, you just gave us one. Uh, are there any others? Okay, and hopefully, uh, at that meeting, Jenny, uh, the committee that's meeting with the foundation and the, uh, friends, uh, we can, uh, bring that information back for that meeting.
Yes.
Okay, any concerns about adjourning this meeting right now?
Nope.
Okay, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your input and comments today.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Oh, yes, Happy New Year.